Yes, we're ready. I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Underwood, Councilwoman Templeton. Councilman Weiner, Councilman Dennis. Councilman Benz.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight, our bill's amount to eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Benz.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. Mr. Povich will not be here this evening. He called and is not feeling well. Remarks of visitors. Do we have any others?
Mike was the only one who filled out a request, sir.
Alrighty, thank you. Beds.
We have none.
Let's move right along to ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have Bill forty-six fifty on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six fifty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date.
Staff report, please.
Okay, so you have the ordinance and then all of the backup that I sent you guys for the budget amendments. Does anybody have any specific questions that we can answer? All right, if there are no questions, I guess if you want to continue.
Alrighty. Since there are no discussions, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-six fifty for the second time.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-six fifty for the second time?
Bill number forty-six fifty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Benz.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes. Bill forty-six fifty has passed. We also have Bill forty-six fifty-one on the agenda this evening. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and establishing an effective date.
Bill number forty-six fifty-one is now open for discussion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Okay, so the main changes that we had were we added sixteen thousand five hundred for airbags for the fire department and ten thousand to repair the pickleball court lighting, and some timing of different trucks that we, some part of them will be here before nine-thirty. But other than that, it's pretty much been the same thing that was presented at the last council meeting. Do you guys have any questions about any of the documents?
I have a question. On the larger purchases. I'm just curious if this is right. It says single axle dump, one hundred and sixty K, and then a tandem axle dump, one hundred and fifty K.
It's the snow plow equipment that we put on the singles that makes it more expensive, for the hydraulics.
Oh, so you're saying this got all the snow stuff with the singles up? I got it.
Can you put your mic?
Have we, have we put in the budget for the snow, you know, the lift set for the back of them that'll hold them up, safety wise?
You know, we, we talked about that project. I think we were, I thought, I thought we talked about doing one as a trial, but it may be in operating. It may not be parts of that because they weren't that expensive.
They weren't that expensive. The ones where literally one person, the legs drop down.
Right.
Drive the truck out.
Yeah.
I know we wanted to demo one, but if I'm not mistaken, we put it in operating to, to get at least one, if not more. Because they're, they're relatively inexpensive.
We want to try one out before we do a whole hog on it.
Okay. The video looked pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's something, safety wise, for, you know, those guys would be real good.
Well, it makes storing, it makes storing the salt meds a lot easier as well.
Right.
Because they're just, they're just free standing at that point. We don't have to chain them up in the, in the.
Right.
Yeah.
Safety wise, I think it'd be a lot better.
So we've got one in operating.
Okay.
And when we get it, I'll take a video or I'll invite you guys to come out and take a look at it if you want.
Sounds good.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-six fifty-one for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. Madam Clerk, could you please read Bill forty-six fifty-one for the second time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Benz.
Yes.
Bill forty-six fifty-one has passed.
Thank you, guys.
Good work, Stephanie. We have Bill forty-six fifty-two on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, approving the final plat of Twin Valley Phase One and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-six fifty-two is now up for discussion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. This is the Tin Home Subdivision on Horon Road, right around the corner, eight hundred block. He's doing that in two phases, and on the very north end, he wants to get started on those two houses with Phase One. So this is the final plat for that, that phase.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Park gets that empty lot on Horon too, isn't it? Encompasses that?
It is. Yep.
I've got a lot of complaints that pass by standing water, mosquitoes, everything, so that's going to solve that problem.
It should, absolutely. He's doing all new detention, redoing the grade on there, so absolutely should.
Are there any other questions or any other discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-six fifty-two for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-six fifty-two for the second time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, approving the final plat of Twin Valley Phase One and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Benz.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Bill forty-six fifty-two has passed. And we also have Bill forty-six fifty-three on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending Chapter two oh five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus to amend the definition of certain animals and clarifying types of animals prohibited within the city, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-six fifty-three is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, and Brian, of course, helped us out on this. The classifications or the definitions of what is wild or exotic continues to evolve. Brian, if you'd like to elaborate.
Yes, so what this ordinance does, one of the things it does is addresses an inconsistency wherein we prohibited in the current code wildlife, but we don't have a definition of that. We had a definition of wild animals, so we've now reconciled those two sections, so it's clear that wild animals as defined in the code are prohibited as pets. We've also broadened the definition of exotic animals to include non-human primates, large carnivores as defined in state law, dangerous wild animals as defined in state law, primarily to address the keeping of, of things like foxes and, and monkeys as, as pets within the city. And the ordinance would, would prohibit keeping such animals.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-six fifty-three for the second time?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-six fifty-three for the second time?
Bill number forty-six fifty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending Chapter two oh five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus to amend the definition of certain animals and clarifying types of animals prohibited within the city, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and establishing an effective date. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Benz.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Bill forty-six fifty-three has passed. New business, request for destruction of records.
In the packet, you'll see the different list of records to be destroyed by shredding of the different departments. They were included in the packet.
Is this a yearly process, right?
No, not necessarily. Just, a lot of records are five years, some are permanent. We usually do it a couple of, you know, two to three years apart.
There's a, a record retention schedule from the Secretary of State's office that we follow. So sometimes it just happens that a year will go by where we won't have any. You're not going to try to slip a couple in there, are you?
Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the destruction of records for the city. The ones that the city clerk has brought in our packet.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motions carry. Motion carries. Carry, you can destroy the records. Yeah. Item B, upon request of the Chief of Police, this item is going to be tabled until October the eleventh. New Facility Management Website Presentation by Barb Lowery.
So we have been, Michelle and Stephanie and myself have been working on this since July. Working on that, getting it all set up, and actually the pictures, and get to write everything, and I'll show it to you.
There you go. It was there?
Okay, so like I said, Miranda and Michelle and Stephanie and I have been working on this since July, and then Miranda and Morgan have done training on this, and they have done a lot of testing, you know, test reservations and things like that. And then they have also gone in, any reservations that had put in, been put in from October first that people had already made through the end of the year, those girls went in and put all of this in here. So on this website, you can come here and you can reserve a pavilion, you can reserve a ball field. I'm not brave enough to let somebody who is reserving ball fields for a whole season loose in here yet. But if you just want one, you can come in, you can come in and do this. There's also a component for the library, so i- if they want to do something, you know, they do their craftings once, you know, every month, say they've only got sixty-five of those. You can come in and reserve one so that they'll know, you know, that, who they're spoken for. So if you come down, here, you can see there's a whole big welcome page where it'll tell you exactly what you need to do to set up your account, and then you've got all the different facilities. So this is the different parks. Yes, we have more parks than these, but these are the parks that have reservable spaces in them. So if you go to the band building, so it's going to tell you a little bit about the band building. It's going to tell you a little bit about Hubie Moore, who he is. If we have a facility, if we have a grandstand, if we have a field, if we have a pavilion, something named after someone. I took the opportunity to put the information in there as to who they are and why the city was compelled to name something for those people. So then it tells you a little bit about what amenities are there. You know, and then you can go ahead and reserve it. So there's something in here for each of the parks, the fields, the, the pavilions. Here's ball fields over here. Yes, we have more parks. These are the only two parks with ball fields. So if you go to Sunset Park, so this tells you about the different parks or the different fields and what's available at each of them. I'll go back and show you this map at, at Kreitz Park. So you can go in and look, and you can see there's a list of the fields, but if you go in and touch on the map, this will give you all of the little houses that you see are reservable pavilions. The dots are the ball fields, and we're very limited on the, the icons that you can use. So the bus is the stage because the performers will come and go on. But listen, I had houses, dots, a bus, and a tent, and so those were my choices. So that is, so that is, is those. Then if you come over to events, and Winterfest will be the first event that will be run through here. You know, in the past, the vendors and things for Firecracker Festival, they had to print out their forms, they had to fill those out, they had to pay for them with cash or, or a check, and a lot of them didn't like that. They wanted to do a debit or credit card, they wanted to do it online. They didn't want to have to wait. So now vendors can come through here and they can reserve everything here, they can pay for everything here. It'll give you different information about what's going on. We come over here and look at Santa House in December. This will show you all the times that you can visit with Santa in the Santa House and tells you about it, and, you know, tells you that there's no reservation, there's no, there's no fees for it. Come and do it, and come and, you know, tells you that the non-perishable items goes to the food pantry, cash donations, go to shop with a cop. I don't know if you guys have any, any questions. This goes online Friday, and there's a lot of information in here, so I hope if you've got a second that you take, take a minute and look through here and see, see what all.
Barb, I got a question for you. Being the baseball tournament past experience.
Yeah, you're going to talk to me.
One question is, like, when it rains in tournaments, they're all scrambling for fields. So if somebody would jump on here and they only reserve one field, does it show the other fields open?
Yes.
Okay, and let's say if a tournament park director wants to rent the entire complex, they can tie all the fields up, but payments due the day they tie the complex up, right?
But that's, tournaments are going to be like season-long reservations. You don't just get to come in willy-nilly and do that. If you want, you know, if you want to practice, schedule a practice for your, for your team or something, you know, come and do it.
Right.
That's fine. But tournaments and season-long reservations, I'm not quite brave enough to turn this loose yet.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of bugs with that. That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, I'm.
Ballwin tried it, it turned out to be a massive crap show.
I'm just not ready to turn that loose yet.
Okay, that's why I was checking on it.
Yeah. Is there anything else?
Good job putting this together. Looks good.
Good job.
Real good job.
It wasn't just me. Like I said, it was Michelle and, and Stephanie and Miranda and Morgan, all of us working on it. So, but if you've got any suggestions, I'd love to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any old business tonight?
No, sir.
That brings us to Mayor and City Council reports. Councilman Tenon.
Uh, Mike, I have one little thing. This morning, this probably already saw off now, but this morning I was on my way across the city, and you guys already heard about this. Anyhow, there was a sign that said, I believe, Work Ahead. But I was pulling the trailer, and when I got to Work Ahead, the roads are all closed. So basically, me and a whole bunch of other people were stuck. I had to find a place to turn around, but then another lady, she's got the massage pillow, she, she could tell she was hot. She's standing there barking loud on the phone because everybody's doing turns and everything. So I called the city and said, you know, they need to put a detour sign there so people, this is happening.
That's, so if you recall in your Friday update, and then also in the report, so that's Special Road District is doing the work up there. Duracell is doing the work, but we, we'll make sure to stop by the drive side tomorrow and make sure that they understand that, you know.
Yeah, my biggest issue was detours.
Yeah, they just didn't set up a detour.
By the time you're there, you know, you got one sign, and those signs were up last week, and that was going on, and I did read the report and remember that after I got there. But.
But unfortunately, the lady owns the massage place didn't get to see my report, so.
There was a bunch of people standing there, and the guy come back and asked me if there was something that could help me with, and I was like, I just need to figure out how to turn around. He did help me with that, but there was a whole bunch of people, and it was just total chaos. And I talked to, I talked it out to the lady that's in charge. I just thought a detour sign would be appropriate.
Sure, that's something from the hand, but Duracell was in the office when I got in this morning. Greg and I got beat downtown, so I get into a little bit late, but she was in there coordinating with staff when I, when I came in, so I didn't hear anything. I missed, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yeah. This detour is on the detour. I'm really sure that I think I asked somebody to, because we saw the whole thing.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vance. Councilwoman Templeton. Councilman Boyer.
Just want to say, uh, the George Porch concert out there ran real well this weekend. We went out Sunday and the groups were fantastic, the crowd was real good, and couldn't ask for better weather. It was just beautiful. I think you went Saturday, didn't you, too? As well? Yeah. Wanted to compliment the Police Department on, I always review your police reports. And you guys have been busy, and I know it gets pretty dangerous, getting more dangerous all the time with these groups coming down out of St. Louis, so you guys be safe out there. Matt and Greg, I seen, you guys went to the East West Gateway Meeting up there on the Great Streets program and such, and Jason went with you. Why did Denny Foster go along on that?
So what East West asks during the Great Streets process is that there's obviously a representative of the community, and then they, they would prefer to have a vested business partner as part of that. So Danny being right there at the corner Main and Mill. Stephen Bacon was the selection by Crystal to be his counterpart on the Crystal City side. Stephen being a, you know, an architect and things of that sort. So they were, they were the two that we recommended to East West, and, and then they helped us when we were talking and interviewing the, the consultants.
Got you. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Dennis.
Just wanted to say, all the budgets I've been through, this is a very smooth and very good budget. I like how it was handled, you know, pretty well-witted review it. I did enjoy the park this weekend. Both concerts. It's good to be out, be around people, so, and I continue to get compliments on our traffic control. Ticket numbers are up, it's making it safer for everybody. I did see one thing on the, on Main Street coming in, there's a lot of yellow writing on our brand-new street. Please tell me we're not digging that up. Matt looks like he didn't write it, so. Yeah, so it kind of, kind of concerned me a little bit as I was coming in, and it's like, oh, no. It's always the bet, what, what we'll have to fix when the street goes down, so if you get a chance, just go out that way and see it, so. Other than that, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, sir. A couple of quick things. Greg or Matt? Greg, actually, I went to you, I apologize. Has anybody had a chance to look at the trees there on Pounds Road that Mr.?
The two that we talked about.
Yes, sir.
Right before you get to.
Tangled Acres, yeah.
All right. Matt and I talked about that last week. We were making a determination as to how much they encroach into the right of way and how much we would be able to cut them back or remove them. So hopefully, here the next, by the end of the week, we'll have something figured out.
Thank you, sir. Striping, I've got a few calls on that.
He's got the answer for you.
Would you be so kind as to update us all at one time?
Sure. Striping will begin tomorrow at six PM and will probably continue for three days. So it's going to be during low traffic volumes, I hope, but it depends on the, on the vendor and their availability, so we'll just have to work with it. There'll be some, probably some rolling blocking, blockages, but the paint's supposed to dry super fast, you know, so cars can get on it pretty quick. It's just need five minutes, so. Some of it will be, yeah.
And then I got a request from a Boy Scout group. I guess years ago, the city used to do a camping in the park at, was now Kreitz Park. Does that ring a bell to you?
We down on the Fairground area.
Yes, sir. Is that something that we could entertain again if they, they would come to City Hall?
Yeah, we allow some limited camping during the George Porch Festival. We would be able to, we would be able to accommodate that as well. Sure. Yeah, they just probably get with Barb or Josh.
Push them that way.
Okay.
That's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Last count. The active COVID cases for six-three-oh-two-eight is down to ninety-one, which is good. Once again, I have to say it, please get your shots if you haven't gotten yours. Mask, social distance, that's the only way we can control this thing. And it was a good festival, the George Porch Festival. I was down there also. And everything turned out good, so good job, Barb. everything turned out good. So good job, Barb. That's all George. Well. Yeah. Yeah, he's already got it planned for next year, which is good. That's right. Are there any other comments from anyone? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made. And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.